The agriculture to zero in Pinal County. I think there's still some contracts up in the Maricopa County and possibly even some in the Pima, but not very much. So the municipals have been reduced by 3% and the reservations have been reduced by 6%. So I think the thing to remember on this slide here is you can see those tiers of tier zero, tier one. We are actually at this time in a tier one status, but we're managing as if we were in a tier two A. We, I guess, we were just trying to really make sure that we are good stewards stewards of that water. So the conservation efforts, you can kind of see from this, the cap is focused on, you know, maintaining those levels as high as we can. And you can see how much water we have stored over the years there. So some of that water is, is left back into, into the lake and some entities are compensated for it. Others take it for future use. What's next? So the 2026 Colorado River operations, the Bureau of Reclamation has initiated a National Environmental Protection Act process in 2023. The lower basin states have developed a draft alternative and consideration. So I was talking to Mitch about this in the beginning. We've, you know, everybody's kind of established some, some guidelines where they would like to see this go in the future for 2026. But the Colorado River is impacted over the, the broad range of the future of the conditions. So everybody's looking at long-term, how we're going to manage the risk going forward, improve the predictability and reduce the, or reduce and stabilize the lake and Lake Mead, which is probably the one that's most important to us. Additionally, the work with the stakeholders, water issues and upper basin is needed. And we have not reached a consensus. I'll just say that at this point. The lower basin here, you can kind of see how they've divvied up the, the water from Flaming Gorge, Navajo Lake and what have you. This is, this is just kind of a pictorial type understanding of where the water comes for each of these reservoirs and how they've been divvied up. Long-term solutions, augmentation, finding new water supplies. Everybody talks about that all the time. You hear about the desalination ideas, conservation efficiencies, helping users to conserve their efforts on the, on the river, with the river water. I think you see a lot of desire for ag to go to drip systems and more efficient irrigation systems. Reusing, this is back to what I talked about very beginning, support the studies about recycling water. I think that recycling and replenishment is, is going to be big in the future. And the recovery of stored water, which is, we've stored a lot of water and we're going to be able to use some of that water in the future, which is good to help maintain the delivery systems. So, and then we have the Central Arizona Groundwater Replenishment District, CAGRID, which the Central Arizona Groundwater Replenishment District, CAGRID, was created in the mid nineties to help water providers and landowners to comply with the Arizona groundwater laws. CAGRID plays an important part in that role. I think there's several subdivisions in Pinal County that are on the, are, are members of CAGRID. So on your tax bill, you'll, you'll see a replenishment charge. I did a subdivision off of Cottonwood that I put in that, in that system there. So it's, it's a good program and we hope to expand it even more into the Pinal County area. Not separate entity, I guess everybody kind of blends the two together. We work hand in hand with the, the CAGRID governed by the CAW Board of Directors and serve the members of Maricopa, Pima and Pinal Counties. A financially separate fund, when you sign up for those replenishment obligations on your subdivision, there's fees that go with that and that's how we fund that operation. Here's a couple of ways that we do the replenishment. We can do it through agriculture and we can do it through replenishment basins or basins that, that are designed specifically for that. So there's, the green shows member, member service areas and then member lands or subdivisions. We do have some in the Casco Grande area. You can kind of see that real prevalent down in the Tucson area and also up in the Upper West Phoenix area. So CAGRID's plan of operation, I can tell you, we were briefed on that at the last meeting, last committee meeting. The plan of operation is a 10-year plan. They have to produce it. Can't remember the date that it has to be to the governor's office. By the end of this year. So we, we, the committee approved the draft and so we'll have it on our board, one of our board meetings in the near future, if not this next one, and get it to the Department of Water Resources and the governor's office. It's an obligation that is required. Next steps, this ought to be, I had to look into this. So, oh yeah, this is the plan of operation. So we'll, we'll have this all in place by then. It looks like they've got it already marked out by October 10th, we should have it in place and ready to send to the department. Learn more about CAP. This is something you all can do. We have a neat little program, which is you can visit our, the cap and know your water. But we have what we call the CAP University. You can enroll in that. We've, very successful. You can learn a lot more about the, the CAP and their operations and, and the benefit that Colorado River brings. And we do that once a year or twice a year. Three times a year. So there's opportunity to get, log onto that and just takes up a little bit of your time, but it's very educational. We are looking at building an educational center. We want to build and, and we need some more capacity, more office and space and, and meeting space, but we also want to fold in an educational part about the history and the operation and the impact that it has. It's, we're, I'm very excited about seeing this operation or this facility come, come to fruition. So we'll see that in the next, we hope by '26. Thank you. I stand for any questions. Great. No, but if there's anything I can.
You should have taken the under, Larry.
Yep. What's that?
I did, I do have a question.
Okay.
Back in the day, this was probably 15 years ago now, maybe, they used to have a tour around the state as part of that CAP university. Do you still do that? I thought that was just done like once a year.
Not part of CAP University. That's, that program's only been around for about four years. But we, I'd be more than happy to arrange a tour for, for the council. In this location, we would probably go to Pacacho Pumping Station, four levels deep, really neat to see. But we don't offer tours very often or as often as we used to, primarily because most of the plants are not ADA compatible. So we can't bring the general public in there. So it's only special, special groups that we take, we take through. I'd be happy to.
Okay. Thanks Mitch.
Sure.
Something to think about. It's, it's pretty fascinating system, so.
It's fascinating. Just if, if you just went to the facility, Seventh Street, north of Deer Valley and saw this shop, and I, I guess that's because I'm kind of a gearhead. I, I just, I mean, massive, massive impellers that we tool up and balance and put back into the, into these operations, we do all in-house because it's just, it's more efficient and it's cheaper. And like I said, they just don't have these parts sitting around. So we do a huge amount of our own repairs and very skilled craftsmen, workers. It's a well-oiled machine, you don't, that you don't see much of and you don't hear a lot about it, but it's out there. And I'm here to tell you that I'm, I'm very proud to be representing Pinal County and the work that those people do.
And Mitch, could you send Larry or me or both, maybe the member lands, the member locations? Cause I saw it on your map there and I saw that Copper Mountain and our water company were part of those member organizations. I'd like, I'd like to see a little more detail on that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we can break it down.
Okay. Thank you.
Matt? So Steve, thanks and Mitch. We got to have lunch with Mitch at the, the League of Cities. So it was nice. Got to know him with the, at the CAP lunch. Learned a lot of neat things. One thing that I think is really interesting, most people, I don't know, I find it fascinating that running water doesn't evaporate.
Yes, it does.
But not at nearly the rate of standing water. It's, it's way less evaporation. And so as the canals go, you don't lose a lot to evaporation.
Right.
I learned that there. But I want to thank you, Steve, for serving because I've talked to, you know, Representative Martinez is a good advocate. Senator Shope has done a lot of work on it and I got to meet Representative, or I know, Representative Dunn, soon to be Senator Dunn from Yuma, who has a lot of connections here and he's really fighting for our rights as well. Because one thing that really hit home, as you could see when you gave the makeup of the board, you're a lone wolf.
I am.
In a way, right?
I am.
And I appreciate that, but, but it's kind of, we really need to look out for ourselves here because as you can see, we take the brunt of the cuts and everyone else is happy except for.
Right.
Poor little Pinal County stuck in the middle of these two. So.
Especially our farmers.
Yeah, our farmers are, you know, and so they're looking for alternatives. And that's a big economic engine here in Pinal County. So it's something you might have to be aware of. So I appreciate your efforts. Anything else we can do or I mean, what, what do you think?
Well, I think we're pretty much in a wait and see mode with the department, with the Bureau of Reclamation. We've, we being the lower basins have put forth what they think are, are reasonable ways to manage. And I think system loss is the biggest thing that probably comes to, comes to the discussions more than anything. You know, who's going to, who's going to take the responsibility for that, that system loss stuff? But the, and the upper basin has put forth their ideas and we're not even close. So I don't know where the bureau will come down on this in the future or how long it'll take, we hope sooner than later, because we'd all like to be able to move forward. 2026 sounds like it's a long ways away, but it isn't a long ways away. And we want to know how we're going to, how we're going to proceed in the future and what the future of our water is going to be down here in, in Arizona.
Just one more question, Steve. And as Matt said, you know, you're the big bad wolf, so to speak. Is there, what's the opportunity for us to have a second representative on that? What would it take for us to have more representation? Not that you don't do an excellent job, but you know, I mean, is it, what's the criteria?
The bylaws, I think is the biggest.
I think it's called population.
It's, it's statutorily written.
Based solely on that.
It's in the statute, so.
Act of Congress.
And I don't even know where you'd start with that.
Okay.
But it's all been established in the statutes, so.
And as the mayor said, population, but I just wondered what the other criteria is.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
If we're half a million, they're five million.
Right.
So there you go.
They're five million. They're five million, they're two million, we're 500,000.
I mean, the representation is fair, kind, I mean.
That's why. That's why, that, this, I'm sorry. Shouldn't I say?
Yeah, please Mitch, come up here. And I'm so happy that Mitch is here.
Sorry about that. Just for the record, I'm Mitch Busevsky, Public Affairs with Central Arizona Project. The way that the CAW CD was set up is that the Bureau of Reclamation, the Department of Interior basically said, "We do not want to deal with individual users of Colorado River water. We want to deal with a single entity as, as the CAP is related to the CAP." And so the state set up the CAW CD, the Central Arizona Water Conservation District, and made it a public entity with popularly elected Board of Directors because they knew that the, the CAW CD would not only be managing the canal system, but would have the authority to set property rates in order to help pay back the federal government, that $1.65 billion. And we pay about $50 million a year on that. But over the years, as population has changed, the original was set up based exactly on a population, 10 to 1 from the Maricopa County to Pinal County and 4, so it was 10 to 4 in, with Pinal, with Pima County. Over the years, rather than changing the number of representatives as population grows, as Steve referred to, we have a weighted system on, on votes that are like on taxes or rates or something that of, of importance to the public interest, are, are, we weight each vote, so, and the only one that stays one vote is Pinal County. So Pima County actually gets less than one vote per person on their, on their votes. So we try and make it as stable as possible. But I, I also want to answer your question, Councilmember, that, that's one of my jobs, is to make sure that your interests are represented on the CAP, in the CAP operations and everything. And certainly what, what Steve's most important role is, is representing you and the other residents of Pinal County to make sure that Pinal County interests are, are given as, as much importance as, as they have. As, I mean, it's truly important to represent you guys well because Pinal County is, always seems to be playing catch-up. So we've tried to, to take that into account and really put a lot of effort into getting what you guys want to have happen.
Thank you Mitch.
Thank you.
Thank you Steve.
Thank you.
Any other last comments, questions?
I, I.
Thank you both.
I think there's a bright future in water. Is it, is this yours or is this Larry's?
Thank you, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on our agenda tonight is a discussion relating to the 2024 Access Management Revisions. And Kevin, you want to lead this off or Larry, you gonna set it up?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll set the stage.
All right.
A few years back, the mayor and council adopted the City of Casa Grande Access Management Standards, which really builds the, the technical standards for various roadways and the like. And so, and their, the staff, along with the assistance of our partners, Amy Moran, who will be doing the presentation this evening, would like to introduce some of the modifications for 2024 that will be proposed. And so Amy, with that, I'll hand it over to you.
Thank you, Larry. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's always nice to have an opportunity to talk to you about the good work that the Public Works Department is doing and it's an honor to help them continue to improve the current Access Management Standards. I know I've been here several times over the past handful of years as we've gone through this process, so I'm just gonna briefly remind everybody, you've heard before, I'm gonna tell you again, Access Management is really focusing on looking at what the priorities are for various types of transportation facilities, recognizing that, for example, a freeway facility should have very limited access because it is intended to serve a very high volume of traffic. On the other end of the spectrum is the local street system that has very prevalent access. And so by default, it, it is equipped to handle a much lower volume of traffic. So the goal is to have the right balance between property access and the ability to serve the volume of traffic that's trying to traverse these facilities. So Access Management, and it's important, really it focuses on trying to have the right number of access points and the right spacing between those access. Every access point represents a different number of potential conflict points. So you can see at a full access intersection, there's actually 32 conflict points. And if you think about that, that's a lot of opportunities for potential crashes, which then can result in impacts to the flow of traffic as well. The more access points also, if, if you think about the vehicles that need to slow down as they're entering driveways or that as they're exiting driveways may result in a, a potential conflict or need for a vehicle on the through street to sort of decrease their speed to, to allow safe passage of those vehicles. So those are the things that we think about when we talk about Access Management. So there's a lot of different ways to manage access. You know, raised median is a pretty typical one where you'll look at, you know, providing strategic openings for those various access points. We also recognize it's important, when possible, to think about providing joint access. So if you've got multiple properties that are located side by side, is there an opportunity to consolidate those driveways? We also want to make sure that we're addressing things as clearance from a, an main intersection, right? I'm sure we've all been in those situations where maybe, I think a typical example might be a gas station driveway that's located really close to a signalized intersection and you have people trying to maneuver their way in and out of those locations. So these are all things that we think about, that we're trying to provide some guidance around as we think about these Access Management Standards. So as Larry mentioned, they, the standards were previously adopted and over time, as these standards are being applied, really the goal of staff is to look at opportunities to increase the clarity for applicants regarding the expectations, what should be contained in their site plans and in associated traffic impact analyses. And in doing so then, create sort of uniformity and, and clear expectations for those developers and their consultants. And I can tell you, having been on, on the other side representing developers, that the, the greater the clarity that we can get from municipality, who's going to be looking at the information that we're submitting and reviewing that information, we really do appreciate it. It, it takes away a little bit of the unknown in the process, right? That guesswork of, well, do we need to include this? Do we not need to include that? So, so that's really the goal. So a lot of the modifications that, that took place now was really just for that, to try to increase the, the clarity, make sure that, that the expectations for what should be submitted were, were consistent across the board. And so there were a variety of procedural changes and clarifications. There were also some technical specifications, particularly with regard to traffic impact analysis. There was some changes to a scoping checklist, which is a requirement for developers as they submit a TIA to make sure that, that they're starting off on the right foot. And then there's attachment to the Access Management Standards, that's kind of a summary that we made some changes to as well. And looking at the procedural modifications, some of those are just document changes, page numbering. We, we took a different approach to the page numbering of the documents so that different attachments or appendices could be printed out separately with their own reference numbers to aid in, in discussions between staff and, and applicants. We added some clarity to the TIA report contents, just as an example, some additional information about the applicant, so it was easier to find their contact information very readily within the TIA. I think one of the big things was just really solidifying the role that city staff was gonna have as the, the developers work through this process. So some clarity on the coordination, that there is a requirement that folks meet with city staff to have a scoping meeting to go over that scoping checklist so that expectations are very clear from the get-go before the developer would, would have the consultant start engaging and doing work, make sure that those assumptions are, are known and agreed upon. And then really just this authority of the city traffic engineer. And this is kind of an important one. Really, it, it indicates specific areas where the city traffic engineer may have some flexibility to, at their discretion, modify maybe some of the standard provisions, recognizing there could be potential, you know, special circumstances associated with, with a development. So, you know, trying to stay as much in accordance with the actual management standards, but recognizing that, that there's not a one-size-fits-all approach. And so giving that city traffic engineer the flexibility to be able to address those, those types of situations. From a technical standpoint, a lot of this just related to information that was gonna make it a little bit easier for the review process, to, to help streamline that review process. So some new exhibits that, you know, very clearly depict this driveway, the driveway spacing, so there's no need to go and try to figure it out. There's a lot of factors that are used when you do traffic impact analysis, so just some clarity on some of those and how you should be applying those default factors. Specificity for turn lane warrants and storage requirements, so outlining that process that an applicant should use to determine when turn lanes may be required and what the length of those turn lanes should be. There was also some specificity about the, the hours that are required for data collection. So when individuals go out into the field, they kind of collect their baseline traffic data, what's the appropriate time to do that? So we've got some specifications there. And then from a level of service perspective, when they're thinking about improvements, what are they trying to achieve? There's sort of a standard, you know, we'd like you to achieve a particular level of service, but we also recognize that if that level of service doesn't exist today, we're not gonna ask you to try to do better, right? We want to make sure that, that there's some, some fairness in, in asking these developers to really address impacts that are associated with their particular development proposal. So on the TIA scoping checklist, this is really just a composite list where those applicants provide a lot of the foundational information about the, the characteristics of the development and all of those key assumptions that are gonna go into their analysis. And, and the intent is to allow city staff to buy in and, and give approval that yes, these all sound like sound assumptions, proceed with your analysis, we're not gonna ask you questions about why'd you do that because we already talked about it. So one of the things we talked about is just the development proximity to schools. We recognize that, you know, this is certainly a consideration, schools have some unique characteristics and so we just want to understand as they're starting this process, what schools are nearby. A requirement for a trip distribution exhibit, all that really is, is just their fundamental assumptions. If you're at a particular locale, where do you think your traffic is gonna be going to, coming from, north, south, east, west? How are they gonna be using those driveways? There was a three-year horizon that's new, so for small developments, really just requiring them to look then after they open, three years down the road, what might that look like? And then we added a TIA submittal checklist, which is really intended to help both staff and the applicant. It's all of the requirements that are expected to be present in those reports when they're submitted and it allows them to go down the list and check, yes, I have included that, I have included that, so that they're sure that when it arrives on, on staff desk for review, that, that staff is not gonna be wondering where one of the particular requirements is. And then finally, in Attachment B, which is kind of an all-encompassing sort of summary table of various access spacings, and there were a couple of things that were included that weren't there before. One of them was specifications for local streets. Previously, the Access Management focused on collector arterial roadways and, of higher classification. So now just some specs for local streets, really just kind of solidifying that there should be on local streets, a center line to center line spacing of 30 feet for driveways. That's kind of the standard. And then some new driveway spacing guidance for private access on collector roadways. So that's for right in, right out only, so vehicles can only turn, make a right turn in or make a right turn out. Those should be no closer than 150 feet. And then for those full access, those are the ones where you're talking about the 32 conflict points. We want to make sure that those are no, no closer than 300 feet. So that's it in a nutshell. I am happy to address any questions that you may have.
Anyone, questions?
I, I do have one. So this is all good and all the, you know, this Access Management Standard and stuff, but does it still allow our engineers in our department to, to use common sense in a situation, you know, that doesn't fit this?
Absolutely. And if you recall, I mentioned a little bit earlier in the proposal about that provision about the city staff. It gives the city traffic engineer discretion to modify those standards or make exception to those standards based on certain specific site characteristics, so.
Is that language in here?
Yeah. It is.
Okay.
Yes. I think in a couple of different places, it's, it's clearly noted in the, in the, in the standards and the TIA requirements.
Cause we are in the customer service business, so a lot of times, you know, the round peg doesn't fit in a square hole.
Absolutely.
Okay. And I know you know that, Amy, so. Just making a public statement. Matt?
Yeah, so I did appreciate that about having the meetings before and the, so everybody knows, because one thing that I hear a lot, going back to our customer service, is someone gets so far through the process and they're like, hey, you're changing the game on me right now. Now you can say, no, here, we had it in this meeting and here's what we laid out. So, so we know. One other thing for a lot of people, I know I'm gonna get asked from business owners current, these are new standards going forward, right? So it's not gonna go to everybody and say, hey, yours doesn't meet the standards today, you're gonna have to change.
So a couple of things, there, there's not a lot that has changed with regard to the actual access spacing standards. A lot of it is just clarity on the process. So moving forward, yes, of course, the expectation would be that, that folks would follow this process. Of course, you can't say, well, we instituted some new procedures, but you started, you know, six months ago, so go back. You know, we understand that. But really the goal moving forward is to have this process. This is sort of a state-of-the-art practice for traffic impact analysis, so it's great to see the city taking this approach and, and, you know, cooperatively, cooperatively working with applicants so that everybody has a clear understanding from the, you know, start. You know, I too, I, like I said, I've been on the other side and you get halfway through and then somebody's asking questions. So this scoping checklist is really a great thing. I mean, you know, heaven forbid, even you have a, a change in staff, right? And then they decide that they want something different. Well, if you already have a submitted and agreed upon scoping checklist, it really kind of sets that foundation for that as well.
Thank you. That was just for clarity, I mean, I knew that, but just so everybody knows. And then, I mean, cause that's the thing I hear, I'm sure a lot of us, one of our biggest things now is traffic, traffic, so I'm glad that we're getting this. Thanks, Monir.
Yeah, go ahead, Bob.
We, we hear a lot of complaints and criticisms about ingress and egress to schools. Are there special considerations when you're dealing with schools, like, like two lanes in and two lanes out? Are there options that we could and should be looking at, at any new builds?
Well, that could be a topic of an entirely different presentation. You know, I think starting with these at ground level expectations is certainly a, a great point of departure when you start to think about schools. To be quite frank, schools are a little tricky. A lot of it depends on what is their, their proposed circulation plan, right, with their site plan. How many entrance points are they going to have? What does their parking look like? Guidance for an elementary school is probably gonna look a lot different than guidance for a high school because you've got a different pool of drivers, additional parking. So, and there are a lot of variables. One thing I can tell you as it relates to schools, right, something important would, would certainly be, when you're doing your data collection, right, recognize that those schools are gonna be peaking at different periods than some of your typical developments. So we want to make sure that that assessment is coinciding with those timeframes when they're actually going to be experiencing their highest level of activity in the morning and then in the afternoon as well.
Okay. And Amy, this, does this, does this apply to any of the state highways?
So access to state highways is generally gonna have to follow permitting requirements if you're looking for a, a new access to a state highway. I think, and it, that is mentioned within the context of the Access Management Standards. You know, I think it would behoove Casa Grande to engage the state and, and if at such a time, they're, they're receiving an application, right, for something on a state road. right, for something on a state road.
Do you know, do we have a plan to do that? Because we have like several. I mean, Pinal is one, 84 is another. Florence is also another on the other side of I-10. So we have three of them that intersect here.
Dwayne's going to tell you about it.
Go ahead, Dwayne.
Thank you. So we deal very closely with ADOT on their roads. And they pretty well will follow our access control. So we, like I say, we have a great relationship with them.
Okay. And I just, thank you for that clarification. I just want to check because we're dealing with a whole nother agency, so. And, and we hear about it on Pinal and the highways when things don't go right, so. Anybody else?
No.
Thanks, Amy.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you to Wilson and Company, too. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right. That's it, Larry, for the study session. All right. We will stand adjourned until 7 o'clock and we'll start the regular council meeting. Thank you.